This conference will now be recorded.
All right, call order for the planning commission meeting on Tuesday, April 12th, 2020. Josh, would you please do the roll call?
Sure, Mary Bennett.
Yeah.
Boyd Colston.
Here.
Daisy Howerton. Brandon Jennings.
Here.
Ian Coon.
Here.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Joni Pfizer.
Here.
And Tom Wheatley.
Here.
At this time, planning commission members are asked to make a declaration of the conflict of interest or any ex parte or outside communications. By influence, their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda, so they might come with a fair decision. Okay, this time we take public comments. Of course, we wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only, no actions will be taken.
We're just here because we.
Okay, no public comments.
Okay.
Want to consent to the. Does anybody disagree with March 8th? As shown.
A second.
Minutes are approved. Right, so next is the public hearings. Will the public hearing consider the feasibility of zoning 401 West Madison Avenue? R2, medium density residential district to a C2 restricted commercial district. What take from here, Josh?
Yeah, do you want to have a motion for the opening of the public hearing?
Will we open for public hearing?
A second. All right, see if I can get my technology working today. Okay, so before you tonight, as the agenda says, it's a request to rezone 401 West Madison. Just across the street from us here tonight, from R2 to C2. There you can see a picture of the property. Or you can look at it. The request is filed by AAB Engineering and MKT Investments and the city of our Kansas City. So a combination of all of those. The subject property, of course, is at 401 West Madison. And the area around it is comprised of public, industrial, commercial, and residential, but everything in this neighborhood. The water treatment facility that we're in is obviously to the north. There's a former railroad right away, the ADM mill are east of the site. And Daisy Maze is west of the site, of course. The property that we're proposing the rezone is about four acres. And the proposal is develop a retail store. There is also an area of the. Right away, and it has to do with the second public hearing. It's not zoned anything today, and so we'll formally designate that as a. C2 district as well, in order to fit into that. And I'll explain that a little bit. A sale of the property to Root Homero Group LLC is contingent upon approval of. This request and the vacation request. The city commission last Tuesday did approve a contract on. A portion of the land, it's kind of complicated. There was a portion that the city owned, there was a portion that the land bank owned, the land bank when most transferred last summer. And there is also that MKT Investments owns this little triangle piece here as well. The property was developed as a service station originally, and there was lumberyard and railroad depot on a. Portion of the site, I'm not exactly sure where that was in relation to this particular piece, but it was nearby. All the buildings on the entire site had been totally demolished by 2017. And the city purchased the property, I believe the original intention was. It had something to do with this facility. As part of why it got purchased. In 2019, a portion of the property was deeded to the land bank. And like I said, it's actually under contract as well. As the land bank approved that last summer. These, sometimes these deals take a long time to do. And part of the problem is that railroad right away. They're having some serious difficulties getting clear title on this property, so that's why it's taken so long for them to get. To the rezone process. The city will maintain. That's the former right away, which would be. Oh, I'm sorry. This property here will be maintained by the city because that is where the bike trail will go eventually. It should be started this fall. But it'll go in closer to the canal, so it shouldn't be affected by this. Property, no other land use cases were found for this area. As far as compatibility with comprehensive plan, the future land use. Portion of the comp plan designates. Part of this property as commercial. The proposed use is commercial. When I say that is this piece here is designated for anything because it used to be right away, it was when we did the last. This project should also help to meet a goal from chapter four, the economic development chapter that we're going to talk about tonight. To target industries and retail enterprises that most likely. Will benefit from the labor forward geography, market characteristics, that sort of thing. The market for this type of business should be fairly good on the south side of town here. Because there are not very many businesses of that type in this area. So the zoning ordinance. The area has public zoning. This facility has some industrial. And that's really the ADM mill. And it also has residential. Part of the site that they're dealing with is actually already zoned, C2. That was because originally that was where the service station was, was a separate parcel. So when we did our zoning back in 2014, it was commercial for that, I think there was a house. Further south, that's probably six oh eight. Is the intent of commercial districts to provide for areas compatible, commercial and service businesses. And the change would be consistent with the intended purpose. What I always say. Here's the subject property. Is looking south along Forest Street, that area is residential. And of course, this is looking north back at where we are right now. So basically, you see that across the street. East on Madison, you kind of see a mix, there's some residential off to the left in this image, and then of course ADM is to the right. And the canal and everything there, looking to the west, we see Daisy Maze and a couple of restaurants along that stretch and. Some housing off of Madison, I believe that would be Fifth Street we're seeing there. So the recommendation of staff is to approve this rezoning. The development appears compatible with the area, it has been vacant since 2017, some of it's actually longer than that. The use is similar to the use that was there before as a service station and. In fact, it's probably lighter intensity, it is lighter intensity than the lumberyard was. Shouldn't necessarily affect the neighboring properties. They will be building a privacy fence along the south property line as part of this project. Brings retail services to the south end and the public health safety in general, or should not be negatively impacted by this. So now, before I continue. I received a call yesterday from the, I think it was yesterday, from the applicant. And what. It has to do with what I talked about earlier with the. The difficulties in getting clear title on this property. So what they've requested us to do. Is go ahead and hold the public hearing as much as we can, get comments from anybody. But to vote to table. This action until May meeting. After that, because they will probably be requesting just a little bit more property to the east, a little bit more. This 35 foot section of what used to be Third Street, or it was never really a street. They were only going to request a portion of it. And they may need to request a little bit more because they might need to move that building a little bit further to the east. And so it was for that reason that they requested that we not take final action on this tonight. But to, but to table the action. That, open any questions?
Yes, me and my brother lived down the street. And you said that they wanted maybe some more property on Third Street or Fourth Street?
It's, I say Third Street. Because that's what it was originally, but it's all more that more Third Street is. But it is on the Third Street, does that make any sense at all? Let me, let me scroll back up.
Closer to the mill.
Close to the mill, okay.
Oh, yes. Let me see, so it's more. Over in here.
Okay.
So there's, there's not a street there. We have to call it Thursday.
Yeah.
It's like 35 feet.
That's, that's what the original request is for, here it's that orange highlighted area.
Who owns that now? They're requesting it from.
From the city. That, that whole property there is city. City property, it was, it was originally railroad, but when the railroad. Took up the trucks in that area, they turned it over to the city.
Does the city want to give them a minimum or what do they want to say? As much?
Part of the issue, if, and I need to talk to our city engineer about this. We don't want to get too far over because it might affect the. Pike Trail. And there's some talk of doing something else with this property as well, that's city, city related. It's related to this facility, is what it'll be, but. Other than that, I'd be probably go the entire road straight.
Right, that I wonder. Be less for the city than to be able to approve this.
So this is your neighborhood, man?
Yes.
How close are you to this area?
We're just right on the other side of the corner on the first block.
Okay, that'd be. South side.
Yes.
Could I get your address?
Six twenty-six South Ford.
What was your names?
The house belonged to my brother Ricky Johnston.
Does your house own this factory?
No.
It'd be right here.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Do you have any issues?
No, we were just kind of curious what might be going in and how soon.
Can tell us what's going in, Josh?
I have not delivered it to say the actual business that's going in, I was hoping that our, okay, we'd be here this evening. To reveal that.
Oh, okay.
It is a retail store.
Of what nature?
That's all I can say.
Okay.
You can start guessing, I guess I can tell you now. Yeah, I think they'd ask us not to reveal that, part of it is. It is, it's a complicated part of the development process. If that's revealed too early, they get nervous. So it's part of my job to hold that information back. It will be a retail store and it's, I'll put it this way, it's one you're familiar with. Not anything bizarre.
Why can't you tell us what the store is? Violate any kind of laws?
Dave just asked that, make comment, Josh.
See, one of the things that, as you're developing like this, if work gets out, you're going to be the store. And they can't get the easement cleared, and suddenly the store would be all over like burning. People are still busting burning stuff. You know, you don't want to develop too much.
And at that meeting, if you remember, the applicant actually revealed that it was.
The applicant revealed what?
That it was burning on that rezone. And so that's why the public all knew exactly what it was. So that's right, so it was okay.
I just. Was concerned about that, that my effect. Decision.
I would have pulled on.
Are they asking pretty kind of taxing sentence?
I'm not.
The commission meeting, it was, it wasn't.
Well, they'll get the. They're eligible for like NRP at the very least.
What about utilities, are they asking?
I have not heard anything like that. In fact, as part of this site, they will have to. This drainage ditch here, they will actually have to cover it. At least for their part of property, and they will put a pipeline for it, that's their expense. So they're, they're planning to do that, they, the other utilities, they've already talked to and. Those will be relocated, I think the sewer has to also be moved back. Agreed to do that. You shouldn't have any question.
Recommend table this until we have more information?
Yes.
When we close public meeting? Public hearing is closed. Guess we'll. Table for now, or will we table? I'll second that.
Fortunately, that means the next month is going to be a very busy meeting, I already have two other public hearings at that meeting, but. Can't move forward if they're not wanting us to. But I wanted to go ahead and do the public hearing so that. Citizens had a chance to oyster pain, you are more than welcome to join us again next month if you desire.
We might just do that because we have an idea of what might be going in, but. Everyone promised we'd say this.
When they build the building. They start at this corner and go east. The building.
The building as proposed, and I'll just, and it's going to change probably a little bit, but.
I'm just trying.
That's all right, I'll bring that back up, because it's at the, in this proposal. This, this is the alley, the canal is roughly right in here.
Okay.
And so this building is all east of that alley, if you can call it an alley.
It's where the canals are, it's east from that, right?
Okay.
Okay. I was just wondering because I was going to ask you about the. How they're going to cover that. Canal out.
They're not going to be needing any more houses on that one corner, right? Okay.
Oh.
Not for this project, that, in fact, this, down here is that first house that's left, and it's not going anywhere.
Oh. Now, it's, I understand it's from the canal east to the other canal. Oh.
Do you have a discussion?
So as you might guess, this is going to be the same scenario on the vacation request because they need to, why is that? They need to also table, there we go. Table, have a table this one, but I'm going to go ahead and go through the public hearing portion of this. So we get that out of the way.
But then we go into public hearing.
I'll second it. So. The vacation request. Is basically the same general area. On this map, it's those areas in orange, it's the alley. That is on the property that they're wanting to get hold of. And it's 35 feet of the. What you, what's supposed to be Third Street.
Is that the road street?
Yeah, I think so. And I think the, it was planted that way for some reason. But it was planted in 1886, so that was probably before the railroad even came here. I don't know. I don't know why that says Brandon Jennings on there. Brandon is not requesting this, that was. Last, that was in the last one. So originally, that was supposed to be 10th Street. But at some point in the past, the city redid all of those names of those streets. As far as this one's concerned, the applicant or the city. It's not a contract for that thing. Owns or controls all of the land that will surround this proposed vacation. So all of it would go to them eventually. The technical advisory committee noted that there are a number of utilities present. And that the utility easement along the alley should be retained and make that happen when we do the. But like I said, most of those are going to go away, except for the. Forms who are, which will still remain, so there will still be a utility, so we'll still need to retain that. As far as the Third Street portion, we won't need an easement there because, well, nothing there, so we can totally release that to them. The area again was planted in 1886. At some way, at some point, the railroad took over that street, like I said. But since has been vacated to the city. The alley in this block was only partially completed due to the open canal running its length, of course, there is. Partial alley there anyways, up to all those houses along there, not much of an alley, but it does exist. This particular case, it's, I kind of notified people of both cases at the same time, so we're. We notified everybody that was in the rezone area as well, so. We, we've got the notice out for everybody that will be affected by that as well. The only thing that I noted, I had a citizen call me, I believe they lived at, or had owned the property at 618. South Forest that had some concerns about accessing their garage from the north. But they can still access the garage from the south. And there's never been an alley at least forever there. Crow, there's never been anything there. They weren't. Ultimately really concerned about it, but if it comes to it, the city will work with the developer to. See that they have some access to, if it needs a gate or something.
The property lines is often close, I realize we're looking at satellite map, it seems awfully close to the structure.
Yeah, and partially to your point, it, it's a little misleading on here, but it's probably within 10 feet. And then, like I said before, with the rezone public hearing, there will be a double privacy fence. On that property line for them, so they won't have to, they won't have to. And the same thing with this other property that's around the corner on Monroe. So here is the, the property. Basically the same thing we just dealt with with the rezone, the building is, like I said, is roughly in here. That's where it would be, so they're going to have to do some serious grading through there. Because the, where the railroad went through the front tire, that's just obviously how the railroad works. So they're going to have to do some leveling. Do that, and they'll have to be careful with drainage. This is actually a portion of the plat, I thought it would just be, we need to actually see what it looked like. And again, at that time, it was, it was called 10th Street. And Madison was first. If, if you've ever wondered why Fifth Avenue in downtown is called Fifth Avenue, it's because it was part of that. Numbering system that started with Madison being first, it's the fifth. Street north of there, I don't know why the city never changed the name of Fifth Avenue, I guess we just thought it was cool. Town, but I just thought that was kind of a neat thing that, that explains why the street is called Fifth Avenue. Staff recommends approval, subject to those utilities. And of course, I have to tell you too, that this one, we should also table. Because they're, they may be requesting additional right away be vacated. And I can, Kyle or Cody, which chair of the person said that. Look into seeing if they'll just take that entire strip of land as opposed to just a smaller portion of it. Anything more, so we can ask them what they want to do, the city is prepared to. Basically sell this whole property for a dollar anyway, so it's not going to change much. We did sell the land bank property to them, which is the, this property here. It's, it's still under the city's name, but it's, it's a contract.
Comments? Discussion, we have any issues?
I have a question on that property that's adjacent from Daisy Maze parking lot, east to the east. If you're talking about the city selling it for a dollar, should that be offered to. The owner of Daisy Maze prior to the. Person that's planning to establish a business further east?
Actually, that is the property that was in the land bank, and that is what we actually are selling, I think it was indeed. $200 or something like that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, and that one's already been approved. I have talked to Dixon Midwater of Daisy Maze about this project because she was actually interested in taking the property.
Right.
But that, but it already happened. She approached us.
I see, thank you.
No other comments, I'll move we close public hearing. Public hearings are closed today.
I'll second it. Oh, we ready to talk about the conference of plan? Down here. So, last month, we discussed that link housing, and so what I did, oh, let me pass this up. So, what I did was I updated a couple sections at the end of chapter three, and so that's why I'm, I printed off a new copy, and then I'll talk about it in a second. What changes I've made and how I did the goals. I missed the chapter three and chapter four. Oh, from last week? Yeah. Actually, there's some changes in here. So, chapter. I don't wanna go back over everything because we already did that. The first several sections of that chapter, you probably won't see any changes. I don't think that changed much of anything in introduction revision or background because we already pretty much had that, housing data from the census, it was also there. I think the only thing here that changed was the date or something. Talk about that. Oh, I think this may be new. It was not new. Nice to see these, uh, made charts that showed the survey results from the housing survey that was conducted last summer, I think it was. Again, that was the version from us on the ground. I think most of this was. So, one of the things that I focused on was accomplishments. We, at the last meeting, we talked about what the accomplishments had been since two thousand fourteen. And I believe somebody mentioned a couple things that weren't in there, and I got those put in there. We, we talked about the housing site that had been done, the moderate income housing grant that's being used for Compass Point. After we established that landbank program, which we've used several times for housing projects, Habitat for Humanity loves that landbank program because that's how we can turn land now. We're probably going to be continuing to use the landbank, use the tax sale to acquire more properties for the landbank. The landbank fund has some funds in it, so we shouldn't have to use regular city funds to purchase those properties. So, that'd be a good way to get some more of those properties that are distressed or the property, the house could be torn down, and we'll put it in there so we can resell it. Lakeview Estates was added at that time, they use low-income housing type credits. We did the housing assessment tool last year, and sure, you all remember that. But we did get that grant as we talked about. And then talks about the coenforcement program that we have that deals with housing. Different codes that we use. So, I believe that we covered everything that we've done. If somebody has something else. So, after I did that section, and we had our meeting last month, we talked about how to deal with goals and how to make them measurable. Y'all came up with a pretty good list of goals, and so what I did is I kind of reworded this section and kind of worked off of your comments, your feedback from the last meeting, and came up with a chart. And the way this is supposed to work is on this chart, the, the items and goals are a goal that we're trying to meet as a city. And some of these are kind of what was left from the thirteen plan. And then what I did under that was list some goals that would help us to meet, or at least, actually, sorry, that would help us to meet that goal. So, in the case of encouraging availability of housing for all ages and income groups, we talked about senior housing, we talked about reinvesting in current visiting homes, talk about removing the updated housing where appropriate, establish more rural housing incentive districts, and continue the NRP tax rebate program. For housing, I believe that every one of these needs to be a short-term action. So, we need to accomplish everything on this list in the next, what did I say? Next five years. And I think that's pretty reasonable for all of them, some of them are already doing. Some of them are ongoing things, like obviously continuing the use of NRP is ongoing thing, so we don't have to do anything. Some things that we'll need to do, we talked linked about our fees for building, for housing builders. Talked about waiving, continuing to waive fees based on the volume of the housing units that closed. We have something kind of in place for that, but it was kind of a stopgap measure. And it expires, I think, after two years. So, we may want to, what, what the purpose of this goal was, or this action was, was to make that permanent and come up with a standard way for determining when fees should be waived. Or if there needs to be fees involved. So, that's, that's something the city, what we're recommending with this plan is the city conduct a study of their fees and figure out how to make that work. And it may just be a modification of what we're doing today. The way we're doing it today is if you build a certain number of units, you either get fifty percent of the fees reduced or a hundred percent. I forget what the threshold was. In the case of Compass Point, that has enough units that we waive all fees, all permanent fees for that to help it go forward. So, we, we have something in place, but I think we need to make it a little more permanent and add a little bit more of a reason about why we're doing it. And that last goal just talks about remove or rehabilitation. So, using grants to remove the structures, use the landbank to forgive demolition costs. We didn't even talk about that last month, but it's something I've talked about. Has ways to get a hold of this land so we can turn it back over to a responsible owner. I also added this one because I thought it made sense, waive fees for demolition of dangerous structures as part of the process of doing their fee structure.
Waive the demolition fees if they turn it away.
Definitely would in that case. Usually what happens when somebody turns it over to the landbank is the city just does demo. Or then we take it, we do the demolition, and then we can track those costs. The idea being that when the property is sold through the landbank, that we can recoup some of those costs. Now, those are because the city did it, those are direct costs. So, we're not paying a contractor to do it.
But you could, you want to waive demolition fees and they still retain the land as well, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
So, what's the incentive for them to turn the land over to?
They, that way, they do not have to demolish the house.
That way, they would.
Anyway, they don't, they're not responsible for demolishing the house. We aren't. So, that's, that's what, the way we would have worked that in the past was, that's our way of paying for the property. Instead of paying enough cash, we are demolishing the structure for the ones that they got.
My question is, okay. You have in here waived fees for demolition, what does that apply?
Well, in the, in the case that we're talking about, it wouldn't be any fees. Maybe that one doesn't need to be in there.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm not disagreeing with your question.
How does that work if you have a, say, garage that is falling in itself? If they give you a notice that it needs to be fixed up, you never fix it? What happens?
In order for the city to tear it down without that transfer that I'm talking about, the city commission has to hold a public hearing. And at the end of the public hearing, they vote whether or not to declare the structure to be dangerous. And once it has that designation, it actually gets recorded as basically the mean of property. And then the city can demolish it ourselves or whatever the case may be. And if they don't transfer the property, then the, they're gonna bill for the cost or it goes on special assessments.
So, is there any other stipulations on, see, paying for the demo? Such as you go to the old property here, the old owner or something?
Well, in the case of that, I have to turn the property over. If there, if we are gonna pay for it, not charge them anything, is that, is that what you're asking?
Um, yeah, basically.
Yeah, in that case, if they're turning the property over to the landbank, then they have no responsibility.
Okay, well, what if they don't turn it over?
Then they're still responsible for that.
Costs of the demo, but you have waived fees for demolition. That's what I was trying to clarify.
Now, in, in the case of them doing it themselves or taking care of it themselves, that's when the fee would apply. And so, my suggestion was to not charge that fee in order to encourage them to take care of it themselves. But you're right, if we're gonna waive the fees, maybe this is what you're trying to get at. If we're gonna waive the fees, then they should have to.
Yes, that was wonderful.
Gotcha, because I understand. And I agree that if we were to waive fees, then something would happen.
Is that a turn it over to?
Or we charging the fee.
They just do what they're told. It's gonna be some instructions and a lot of info on that. Say I have a garage that start to look bad. I decide, I don't really want this here. Do I apply or just, hey, city, will you tear this down for me? I don't have a dog fence. Does that, do they?
Because look, that, fees, that's probably not going to work because, and that, there's nothing else on the property. But yeah, if you're, you're just wanting the city to tear down the structure for you, how do you, how do you waive the fee and let them keep the property without having to bring it? Tear down mine, come on, mine gone. You didn't charge them a dollar. You would have to have some sort of, and the same thing with the, the fee structure we have right now with waiving fees for new housing. There, you, there's, it's written into the policy that you have to have the house built within X amount of time. Or we're gonna charge you the fee.
So, waive fees to.
So, there's gonna have to be conditions on that. Same thing with, with forgiven and per housing.
So, this waived fees for them, that's not a permit fee?
No, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, just the.
It's a permit fee, not a demolition cost.
Sorry.
I was thinking they hold them.
No.
And I can clarify, I will put that on there, because it does just say fees. So, yeah, or, I gotcha. We can, I can change that. So, any other comments on?
I just want, um, this came from our city board planet retreat brought by WSU's Public Policy Management Center. All the department heads were there, including all the commissioners, and they were pretty attentive what's going on. It's listed some strengths and weaknesses. Of course, they touched on housing quite a bit. And if you think it's a problem now, it's gonna really reach crisis proportion because Cree Stone has vowed to be the largest packing house in the country. Much more expansion. So, what that's worth of housing, that's what I heard. About two-thirds of it have been coming out here. And some other notes to pass on, some channels, I'm sure you guys are aware. What they're thinking as we flush out chapter four here.
Okay. With that being said, let's move on to economic development. We've discussed this topic before. What, what I'm trying to get at, just like what we did last month, is to help me make sure that the changes I've made are what you're looking for. And also set the goals for economic development. And just like Alvin, I have kind of flushed out some of the goals we talked about at that last meeting. That's what I'm trying to go through this real quick, and the changes that I made, introduction revision, did I make any checks? For background, I did update some information in this section about the industrial parks. Just some of it was bad information, and some of it just needed to be updated. And, oh, and I added, like, since, since this plan was done, came back. Added to it for the golf industrial park. And then, the, the next section, we talked about incentives, I really didn't touch that. Most of those programs are still valid. The different tax incentives, the payments, the tips, all that stuff is still, I'm sure there's maybe something on there, it's not right anymore, but I think, I believe all those programs are still valid and in stuff that businesses can use in order to develop. And then what I did on the next page on four dash four, I updated the employers' table to show our major employers, and this table, it didn't have this in the plan. This show was employment number changes over time. And so, you can kind of see where the growth was, where the contraction of labor was. Of course, Cree Stone is that, they changed, like, two thousand thirteen was it, well, actually, two thousand three was at six twenty. And now, in two thousand twenty-one, they were all the way up to eleven hundred nation. And, okay, just as Tom was saying, that's a never-ending thing. They've told us about hundreds of millions of dollars of more work that will be conducted out there to continue to expand that plant. And this is why housing and economic development have to go hand-in-hand so much because if we're going to get any more employees out there, they're gonna have to split. if we're going to get any more employees out there, they're going to have to split. And that's probably one of our biggest hurdles to economic development today is not having enough housing for people. We're, Creekstone's already busing in, as you heard several times. I think they have four buses now that they are bringing employees in from Park City and from Wichita. So we need to use our housing programs in order to fix that problem because we kind of want those people to live in our community because if they're here, they're more, they're going to be shopping here. They're going to be they're going to be paying taxes here. So it's important that we have a place in this. The, I, I thought it was good to put that table in there, I believe I got that first. I'm carried by letting before she left us. The next thing I did was I updated that sales tax table. Got some information, so I gave the information from K U R and from the city. That kind of shows where our tactical sales have been going over the past 11 years or so according to this chart. Looks like it's increased nearly $30 million, which is good. The collections, of course, vary because the tax rate varied over that period. But the neat thing about this chart is you can see where, how much the city is generating from sales tax over the years. It's low as 2.3 million in 2015. Looks like there's a 3.7 in 17, the most recent one that we had numbers were of 21, where we generated $3.4 million in sales tax collections. So it's a good source of revenue for the city. Some of that, as you know, sales tax, we have sales tax for a hospital that's funding that debt, that was voted on seven years ago. We also have, I believe it's 1% for police and fire. So I think there's one. Oh, I hope this is right. 1% for police and fire and 1% for the hospital. And so that's, we guarantee the debt. The other interesting thing, the state puts out a city trade poll. They do this every year. And it's kind of interesting because it shows you how much of retail trade that the city is keeping. And the idea is to have a score of 1.0 or greater. The most recent one for our city was 0.93, so we're we're not retaining everything, but we're pretty close, it's not too terrible. And then the state also does an additional calculation called income adjusted poll factor. And obviously, our income here in Cali County and our city is a little bit lower than other parts of the state. And so what they tried to do was normalize that. And when you normalize it, that factor is actually 1.33. So we're actually doing a little bit better than what that 0.93 would suggest. Oh, I guess I should read this. A factor of 1.0 shows that for every dollar a city resident spends outside the city, a non-resident spends a dollar at a local retail business. So if it's more than one, that means that we are generating some additional income from non-city residents, which is a good thing. Because that means that people outside the city are helping us pay for some of our projects. Obviously, people in rural Cali County use our hospital. For instance, we've done sales tax in the past for streets. People that don't live in cities still use the streets, so it's, it's a good way for us to give them. It also talks about the trade, of course, this is all technical, the trade area capture, like, how many people were actually getting to come into our trade area, which is less than our population, so I'm not quite sure to understand where that number comes from. But it, it says 10,000. It also, another little tidbit is that our city captured 44.1% of the Cali County retail trade over the over that period. So I'm, I didn't look at info, but I'm sure they're about the same. And then the rest of the sales tax is coming from the other communities in the county. So it's, that actually does make sense, that it's not more than 50% of our cities because Dexter, Cambridge, and Burden, you know, all have sales tax flash, or all have retail to do so. A lot, even though so. So the next thing, I updated that table. It's just funny, just the census table, it talks about the occupations are available in our city. This is based off the American Community Survey five-year estimates for 2010 to 15 to 19. The 2020 data is actually available now, but but the, the neat thing I like about this chart is it tells you what's our civilian labor force is. So we're right in the kind of 5,000 range in total employment in our city. And then further down, you see the population that's 16 and over is about 9,000. So potentially, 9,000 people could work, but that number obviously includes retirees and, and people that cannot work for whatever reason. So that's not necessarily going to reflect the unemployment percentage because retirees don't work out. Also, I updated the income table. What's to say about that? The only interesting thing there is the mean, the median income has increased from for a house, for a family. The census does this thing with households, and then it does a thing with families. So, that's not the same thing, it sounds weird. But a household can have more than one family. That's why it was a two. But you can see the increase, which makes sense. Obviously, we have a natural increase in our wages because. The next chart is about poverty, and that was in there last one, too. Have a measure of what our poverty rate is in the county or in the city. And according to this survey, our poverty rate is decreasing. Which is good. I can't necessarily point to a specific factor that would do that other than places like Creekstone have been really raising their wages quite a bit. Mostly, and it's probably even lower than this because this is pre-pandemic. So if, for those people that are employed in those industries, there's the numbers have gone up a lot since, since the pandemic. Because, quite frankly, it just takes that. There's competition, Creekstone has a lot of competition for the employees. But basically, income is the biggest driver of global economy. That way, if you put all that stuff in there, you add a bunch of charts, it's a bunch of information. But it's important to look at those charts because that's how we determine the health of our economy. And like I said, there's been a rising trend for the city, which is a reduced poverty rate. Interestingly enough, if you look at that chart, though, for people that are over 65, the poverty rate is actually increasing. I don't know, maybe that has to do with social security not giving the proper adjustments, I don't know what that is. But we, we do have a little bit more of a problem with our seniors being poverty.
Part of that's also related to age-related cost of living increases.
It's, yes, I agree. A ton that we, the city can do about that because that funding comes from the better. And Medicare, of course, is one other cost. So we can't, we can't do a whole lot that affects that sector, but what we can do is the other age brackets, we can help to find high-wage industry, which fortunately, pretty good right now because we're very fortunate to have some pretty high-paying industries for our. I did note on here that senior housing can help with that to an extent, especially if it's subsidized. That may sound a little bit. So the next section there, I deleted because it was from old plans and what ended up happening, and this was part of our discussion before, was that we had a whole bunch of goals that we just kept recycling, never actually eat. Part of it was the way they're written. So I just removed that whole section. Obviously, you can't see whatever moved on this particular report. But it, it was just summarizing some of the past, going all the way back to, I think, all the way back to 1966. So it was just coming out of date, so I just flat moved it. I did leave in this 2020 community plan, and I left in the 2010 survey that Cali First did. And I left it in the 2013 survey. This is one of those areas where we need to do survey on before we can finalize this chapter. I'm working on, we talked about Flashcode before. We let that lapse, the city did, and I was trying to get funding to re-up that so I can get some new surveys added. We may not use Flashcode, we may use another survey method, I don't know, I've got to talk to the city and ask them more about what fund. But we're going to do a little bit more surveying to this area that's more up to date. And in the area of economic development, I think we need some post-pandemic I guess we're still technically, we need some pandemic-related responses for economic development. I, I think that's important. So what I will do is, if we don't end up using Flashcode, I will probably look at some of these questions that were asked in 2013 and tweak them a little bit so that we can get some good information from our citizens about what they want to see. And there should be questions in there about is it okay for the city to subsidize economic this, can we use tax money to do that? That's the kind of question we want to ask the citizens. We want to make sure that it's okay. And if it is okay, how much, how much is it going to cost? We, we asked them questions on some of those Flashcode surveys, if you had $100 to spend, how would you do it? I have to look back at that because it was a budget. But I think there was quite, one of the options is like, so we can hold that survey into probably should. But anyway, we have some informations from surveys from citizens over the years that I think is important to kind of keep in here. We, if we get some good information, we can look at potentially removing some of the older stuff again. Just because, how much survey information do you want to explain? That's older. I, I do think we need to do more of this, and I'll do. I guess I made a note, too. There was comments, written comments that people made on the 2013 survey. And I would like to get more of those that are more up to date that talks about it. There's some good stuff in here. At that time, they were talking about needing more manufacturing, but I think we've we've kind of gotten some of that since then. I actually kind of like this comment that somebody made, if the city is doing a good job maintaining services, economic development will happen. I think that's probably an argument against using taxpayer money in order to help with that. But it's, it's a, it's an interesting take. And there's, there's a trip to that. If, if we're making, making sure our, our utilities are adequate for economic development, for instance, it'd be easier for us to have them. And of course, if we maintain our police and fires, they're protected. I just thought there was. We also, I put in the accomplishments section for them, as I tend to do as we discuss on every day. Because if we don't know where we were, or what we, what we've done since last plan, how do we know if we're actually getting? So I intended to put that in each section. Economic development, when I was trying to think of what are we done in the past over these nine years, I struck it a little bit more than I know it does. Mostly because we haven't done a lot that's we haven't done a lot of grants related to economic development. All of the economic development grants are not necessarily through the city, they're individuals. There's been some talk about some CBPG funding that can be used for economic development. Didn't put that in here. The county received money from the CARES Act related to COVID. And there were several businesses in the county that were able to receive some of those dollars from the CARES Act, that, that was given out. I need to check with Cal first on how much that was, so I put, talked it in here. So we, that's not a city, that was actually fully managed by the county. But there was some funding that some businesses, with a lot of money, but some businesses were able to get funding that was directly related to income that was lost related to that. So probably some payroll money, for instance, was probably part of that. I would have to get with Ashlyn on that. And Cali First is kind of in flux right now because Karen Fletchie, as you might know, left there, and I believe last night, Ashlyn Hallmeyer, who's the administrator, was taken over. But I don't know if that's finalized. Though, they're still working, there's, there's a board that's related to Cali First. I believe that city managers on that, a couple of our city commissioners are part of that, so it's not going away. We will continue that, it's just there a little bit of a transition. So any questions about any of that? Anything that you feel that needed to be in here?
There's some updates ahead, regards, goals and actions. Based on what I just heard, city commissioners, they were focusing on downtown development. And Burford Theater is a gold star, 14 years, seven and a half million dollar renovation, private funds. And they'd like to see more refurbishment along there, there's a developer's bought two downtown properties. Who and what's the big secret? They have a lot of secrets, we're in the army.
No, sorry.
I tried to find out, but another thing that was alarming to me when I was still researching, I could focus and about 40 people on each table, it was like eight people, and everyone had different goals and priorities what downtown should be, they're looking at as the hub of the community. One thing was last week, the mainstream community did not accept Mark's city, haunted Woodfield owners. That's too bad because my thing is not to leave any money on the table. I mean, I want to see sales tax, local visitors, not the residents. So get a break on property tax, you know, thank you, babe. But they said there wasn't enough of local interest to be accepted in the mainstream.
I can sort of address that. Part of the issue with that, and they get a whole lot of guidance. They, I think what happened was we didn't have the time to truly develop it. We started that process last, yeah, the summer, I think it was. And so they went out and they did solicit pledges from businesses, but they, a lot of them. So what Main Street is going to do, and easily is that on a reading day. But what she is going to be doing is focusing on continuing to get those pledges. And actually, the Arc City Main Street is an organization. It's just not officially recognized by the national program, the state programs. And so they're going to start doing some different things. It's probably fundraisers in order to build up that a little bit more too. One of the things that we talked about at some recent meetings were providing grants for signage for some of these downtown businesses, fixing their audience, so little, little things to dress up the business a little bit. And that's kind of what Main Street about is, is making the downtown area more inviting. There's a big visual aspect to our organization.
Well, it's too bad because T-Mobile, two weeks ago, beat picked out fifty Main Street cities and gave fifty grand each. Palkin got the one for their ice train. Now, that's, I left on the table, but it's, but. Only other thing I want to touch on, this is more the private sector. I was in Topeka last week. Here, to pass these down, is Kansas Travel Guide. It is the final for tours in Kansas, comes out every year. And this is first contact, people have from the state, mostly I-70, I-35. That's all the major hotels. And going through there, the only thing in Arc City, not to point any fingers, is just the addresses and convention bureau on summit. All these other towns list things that they do. Woodfield has an aisle of lights here, about eight to nine items. And Arc City has nothing, and there's last year's copy. We didn't even get addressed at that place last year, there's nothing. So I just want those to stimulate some ideas as we continue on to this. Chapter four. I mean, there's some great things, I mean, there's some historic stuff. Just to look at, just briefly, guys know, Escondola out here is not just another Indian village in a big history. It is a huge city that they came together with, not to war with each other, do some trade. It's like putting today, like dropping Chicago at the river. And I mean, that's, you're talking about federal funds, visitor convention bureau, that can be explosive. Put some kind of roll records in there, I think. But promoted that and, I mean, talk to BNSF and put in type of railroad interactive science center here, or the center of the country. There's a lot of railroad enthusiasts. There's some things we can capture, some great buildings down here, you know. You know, I lived in Manhattan, ten years, Topeka ten years, respected. I never heard of it. I drove my bike all over the state, why not? Well, it was in this thing, and then someone heard it. It was just kind of frustrating because it wasn't common goal with that. Some people want it expansive, if you want to keep the small town charm. I'm kind of middle, I want the small town with refurbishment. I mean, you got way more amenities in Woodfield. That's in the county, see a few more people, you know, a lot more press on things. The simplest thing, you guys have heard of Gocker City? The biggest ball of twine, I guess, in the country is there, twine, yeah. Less than five hundred people, it's in Mitchell County, about an hour north of I-70. I went there by accident because it went in close by like twenty years ago. And I was like, you kidding me, this is a thing? I saw it, it's like twelve feet high, twenty thousand pounds. Every summer, they have a little festival, and they wrap twine about it, to the cores, all twine and string. And it had a nothing, this guy started in the fifties, sorry. It's like the pet rock just had a nothing, and it's still there. Yeah, I mean, and they give people, drive an hour north and take the picture with it. There's postcards, they got a little gazebo thing. I'm like, we could do a few things like that. I mean, a little ridiculous, but that's just an example. I mean, so I know there's a lot of experience here, stimulate some minds, maybe we could think of something with the city, so we're talking with other clubs and things. I would do that.
Well, and that, honestly, that is, in, in the goals that I put on here, there is nothing directly related to tourism. So I would argue that we probably need to have a focus because tourism is, is an industry. And maybe we need to find a way to work with Berserk City to, well, for a while, to get it here. Make sure that we are talking about what we're doing. And we talked about the self effects earlier. If you get people to visit the community or the fall of twine of Arc City, use as an example, they tend to spend money here. It's more self sex. And, and for that, I'd do more business part to help self start. I think that we do need to add something in here about about tourism in general.
Well, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of funny. Friend of mine, lawyer out of state, he says, hey, where are you at, Arkansas? No, it's Arkans City, what's his Arkansas city? And well, they will say that. They don't even say that anymore, they say Arc City. So he said, you got identity problem. You need one name to go from there. So I didn't, they did, just, you know, truth to that, but I was kind of funny with it. A little thing, so I guess we start with it.
That's actually something that the Main Street Committee wants to get to is, it's exactly. Don't have that really strong identity, like, I will say, that's the salt city. So they can use that as a branding opportunity. Well, we, we talked a little bit about land, I'm sure they thought, wait a minute. With, with our, the L.A.R. society of working now, if you remember that what happened in the Red Rushes that took over Indianland. So we all want to focus on that.
I think, well, it is part of our idea, referring to the name itself.
Well, yes, but I mean, beyond that, it's a branding itself that attempts to object to the economy.
And I think that we need to change the name of the city.
It's been changed before, why not?
Change the name, say we call it Arc City, don't go over here. And it will be a tourist attraction, but somebody back east has already done that. Instead of changing the name of the city.
Well, if you remember, Topeka changed their name to Google for the couple days one time, because they were trying to do Google that. But it was entertaining, it got people to talk. And it didn't work.
No. You should definitely look at adding tourism.
Well, and like the first goal that I, I put down here, maintain coordination among community partners. So maybe we need to say something along the lines of working with the L.A.R. city to find ways to promote. This is what I think is the end.
And one other thing I was thinking about, that we do have, Ken Bryson and the bicycle trails out there are some of the best in the state, and I don't think people want to count them now. And you can talk about Wichita, has almost no terrain, Wichita is flat. You've ridden the trail out there, it's extremely good. People look at it as, it is a big region. A lot of people from Wichita come down, but I think you could capitalize on that to an extent. And if the city doesn't come down like this.
You call a lot of terrain.
Yeah, we call wildlife or.
Temperance, yeah. We could just use the state. Just, just because it's within the city doesn't mean we can't promote it as being asset to the community because it is, both of those things are called wildlife and.
There's a community farm, come up south, that is trying to consider, at least considering the tourism aspect of local wildlife. Getting a vendor set up and sell. I think Boyd's got a good point. Things like that.
Jonathan, were you trying to say something?
Well, yes, I didn't want to step on anybody there because I'm having kind of a lag in conversations. But we also, I don't know if somebody's already said this, but I have, because I can't hear very well. But we do have Cali County at, at Quail Valley Farms. It's a huge frisbee golf now. I don't know, you know, one of my classmates runs it. And so I had no idea that was going on there, but they entertain a lot of big tournaments. So there's, there's a lot that we don't know about. And, you know, we, we definitely need to get together with, or whoever, Visit Arc City or whomever. You know, they should be doing all of that coverage and finding out what all they need to advertise for us. I think that we need to build up downtown and give, give people a break in taxes there, you know. And I may have missed some of that conversation too, but our downtown is, is sad. And I know they're trying to do some Thursday night things, but I don't know what you said about fundraisers, but, you know, I don't know. I'm, I need to be, maybe I can attend next month in person so I can hear better and catch up a little bit.
Yeah, when I was talking about fundraisers, I was talking about Main Street, the Main Street organization.
Right.
Okay. I was just kind of flipping through this just to see what other cities have put in there.
Another issue everyone knows about is things online now. That focus group, there's a lot of gentlemen talking about things, you know, how they grew up here and this and that. And I'm just trying to say, you know, twentieth century's over. The only thing you count on has changed, good or bad, it's come around the corner. And I mean, a good example, I remember going to Gander Mountain, which type of thing you want outside is there? Way overpriced. And you go there, you look at it, try it on, I like this one, go home, order online, get two things. That's why they filed chapter eleven and had their search. They didn't get it. What can you do down here? Well, there's cities like this survived because everyone needed one of everything. Roads are bad, transportation is limited, the world grew up, now we just tell it, you know, back door. And what can you offer down here? Now, cost of building is worse than it's ever been, inflation up what, eight and a half percent this year? Labor problems? Wow, what other ball of worms can you throw at this? I mean, but especially food shops where people take weekend drives to certain shops. You know, they want that fresh, they want to really order that online a lot of people, but. And with your some ideas, just get a collective.
I haven't heard anything this evening that I thought was a bad thing. We, we have a million to be promoting how amazing our little town is, the people on the outside. There's a reason that everybody in this room lives in this community. Yeah, so it's how people, why I feel like you're here.
And then to the point, we all talk about our community in some medium or another. And I don't have high blood pressure, but if I did, it would be Facebook's fault.
Yeah, that's actually one of the poison pills for.
Yeah.
So I'll just kind of talk about what is, what I can put on those pages. The meeting, April, it was April or May or something like that, I can't remember which one. We did talk about a couple of these goals, I felt like, in a minute. We talked about trying to apply for those economic development grants. And at that meeting, Kerry cautioned us on how we worth that. Because like I said, economic development grants work a little bit different than, say, housing grants. Because all of the grant, the grantee is the business and not the city. And so it's actually the business that's applying. That doesn't mean that we can't buy from other companies. And if there's one good thing that came out of that pandemic, it's all of these unusual funding strings that keep coming up. And a lot of it was infrastructure related and just stuff related to the pandemic itself. But as part of that process, and even in the infrastructure bill, there's stuff that is related to economic development as well. To help promote different types of business. We, we were just talking about how people go to a place, use gender bias as an example. You go to the store to find what you want, but then you go on Amazon and find it cheaper. That's the reality of our marketplace today. It's that our global businesses suffer because it's easy, it's easier to order online. And so that means we have to be kind of creative as a city to figure out ways to help the businesses that we have to stay here. One of the things that I talked about a little bit when we were talking about land use was figuring out ways that we can get some of these slightly unusual businesses to come in, don't quite fit our zoning regulations. That can be something that we can use to encourage developers changing those. And one example I just threw out there is like a, a small brewery. Typically, a brewery, excuse that example, is an industrial use. But some of these small craft breweries that come into towns, they want to have their brewery with their bar or their restaurant. And the way most zoning ordinances are written today, including really ours, we can't allow that because we have no way to allow industrial uses in our commercial districts. So that's one little thing that we can do as a city. And we'll be talking about that a little bit when we finish this plan, if we ever finish this. Ways that we can modify our regulations in order to encourage, in this case, economic development. So it's changing what's allowed, where it's allowed. But just like many other than you saying, we just, we just had a rezoned hearing today. You have to be careful because every change we make affects somebody else, so I.
I have a quick question. So on the attractive industries and businesses that, it's called a little company, you realize, of course, what you have about. What do you have a create incubator program? Explain that to me.
I think they're kind of in one of those, but the, the idea of an incubator program is that the city would have a system. Not necessarily the city itself. For small business owners, people that are wanting to start a new business. The incubator helps them. So if, if they've never run a business or they don't know how to do their payroll taxes. Presses, or they don't have to develop a business plan in order to get it, get their loans. An organization like an incubator helps. Those individuals with the process is some people that don't start a business ever because they can't figure out how to do it. And so that's the idea. Like. Apparently we have something like that, I love the chamber helps with that a little bit. But if I didn't know that we had a, a kind of question, how many people actually understand that we have a program like that?
And that's the thing that we have people doing stuff in our communities. But we don't know about it. And if we don't know about it. Say we aren't doing it. An incubator would be, in my opinion, a good thing to do. Other than I mentioned at the meeting that we had. Main Street. I started with a board of directors of the Oklahoma Place Business Association. And I was working social services in a recent. Where no one getting work, much like they weren't getting work because of the pandemic. And now we have an opportunity to. And hire themselves to work. And that you're in an essence going to have your own business. Well, I mean, that's what my partner with. An economic development agency and my government agency, and we taught people how to start their own business. And the outcome of that was. All of the customers except one started their business and ran it. The over half of the people. That started the business and ran it got off welfare because of the business that they ran. And the other half, except for the one that didn't start in the first place. Managed to at least improve their economic situation. So you can teach people how to do it. An incubator, for example, would, would be a building perhaps. Across the street and they come and they have. Kind of like a mall, they have a store at the building. They build their product at the building, they sell their product from the building. The city doesn't charge them what they, what I. It would cost to build, let them, but after a time, they have to make a plan to move out of the building. They have to be sophisticated. That's what an incubator does. Interesting. Yeah. Those programs aren't, aren't very well advertised.
Cali College offered that at one time. I'm not sure if that's still an ongoing thing that they do. But they did have that incubator program for new businesses and small business starting.
One thing that, as I say, former board director of Home Business Association. Encourage home based businesses. We do that in our city better than some places. We don't make it hard for someone to start a home based business. Keeping it going is hard, only in my opinion, because they don't know how to plan for future growth.
Well, and there's, that's a problem with home based business. It's, there's a third threshold that you get to. That it doesn't meet the regulations.
Right, when you start having people that will park in front of your house to buy a product.
That's a problem.
That's a problem.
That's what they call me.
Yeah.
So maybe we should change that to promote our visiting program if we have, others in the day.
Probably police do.
To see if we actually. Again, I, I don't know. I should know. That makes me question. We also talked about. Working on rehabilitating some of those downtown buildings. Something that we talked about when we did kind of meeting last year. This is the one building in the next five years. The good thing about our downtown is we. It's kind of been interesting the last several years, we had a lot of out of town owners. But it's been changing. Not necessarily in town, but Cali County. Several, several people have been buying properties that actually live here. And so I think in the. Long term, that will change. So we have a little bit more control, we have people that own it that actually go to it every day. Which is the big deal with some of these buildings is. Especially when they don't have a tenant. That they're still trying to buy it. So they can, they can see it, whereas somebody that owns a business across the country, they don't know where you're from. It's totally town, the city doesn't. So I, I think we're headed in the right direction there. Obviously, we can't make people buy up the rights. But I see that as a positive trend because if we have low owners, we're more likely to get fixed up. We also have had a number of people that have been fixing up some of these properties. You probably have heard recently that Gordmans actually will be opening, not Gordmans. That building was, was bought by a local. Person who will be opening just this area. So after that's been vacant for hysterical years, somebody is actually going to be going back in there. It's a lot, one less. There's also a couple of people that are working on housing. There's some positive things going on. All we can do is keep working. To keep rehabilitating. But we can focus, we get to focus on. Getting at least one per five year career. And there was another moment here to, or an accident, sorry. To utilize. The database of vacant commercial buildings. And again, I believe Cali first tracked that. That's, it's kind of difficult for the city to track it. We have like this, but it's easier for them to do it. And so if somebody is keeping track of those buildings which are vacant, then first of all, it's easier to market them. For people to, to actually come in and use them. But it also gets the city in contact. With the case of. We, we have something that we actually go to. To get that fixed. I, I'm going to look into that some more to see what they have. Encouraged Cali to continue that. Good thing about that is it's not a big expenditure, so it's pretty easy to do. I think that last one. Is kind of talking about our partnerships again, oh, I guess it's employment. So work with the, the school district to encourage businesses to go in to the schools. I'd every student wants to go to college. And some don't have a degree in college. And so if we have, we have these businesses that can employ high school graduates as opposed to somebody with a degree, let's get them in there. And so these students know, yeah, this is an option, this is a good page on. We also, of course, have the college is a pretty good asset for us to have because of the vocational training. So if, if you don't want to do traditional college course, they have the ability to give you certificates and stuff like industrial arts. So. They teach how to weld or. They're trying to develop like a trade school sort of thing. So you could learn to be a plumber or an electrician or something along those lines. Which is something we desperately need at the town. We, we have. I think really about three electricians that regularly serve our community, which is. We have a few more plumbers than that, but. On a daily basis, I hear from citizens that need plumbing, for example. That they have difficulty getting something to work. And it's because they're busy. I mean, you could probably attest to that. It's just, there's a lot of work to be done and so it would help. Having a program like that to build up those industries. I think part of it too is also construction.
So there was a staff.
Yeah, cut in half.
Three hundred and seventy one, one seven four.
Oh, yeah. I'm forty four dash six. That is, that is a bit alarming. It cut it, cut it in half.
Yeah, encouraging this.
Well, the more you can diversify your plant makes it better too. So I often worry about Wichita. What, what would happen to Wichita? Spirit decided they didn't want to be Wichita.
What would happen to our city? What would happen to our city if Spirit decided to come here?
That's a good consideration that you. It's not that they're trying to do that, I bet they're trying to do that, but we need to be, we need to do prayer for that. In a discussion. And I know I really have what, what I propose to do. We didn't make a whole lot of modifications to this, but I'll bring this back just like I did with Cali. I tried to unlast look at it. Before reconsidered. I'll find out, right? And then I will move into discussion of parks and integration. The beautification board tried. To develop like a chart of. When certain improvements should be made in parks. It's very, it's a very early thing, but it's, it's kind of an interesting thing that I'll kind of bring. Bring to you to see what, what they, and what they did by the board was go to each park. Surveying, figure out what's available in each park, what, what they need to improve in each park. Close the park, you know, that sort of stuff. That was all discussed, so we'll talk about that a little bit as the next meeting. Some of this happened after we had our meeting. So that's part of why I go back to that again. Some of these topics, as, as we know, our newest members weren't a part of this session either. So I want to make sure that. Each of these topics again. We're going to get through this. I'm, I'm still hoping that we can. Have a public hearing towards the end of summer. What would happen after that, assuming that you guys approved it. We would take it to the city commission. And obviously, the city commission has been involved in every discussion and so I have to have. Kind of a workshop or work session. Then have a chance to provide some final input. Once, once you've done that, then we can move forward with having, asking them to adopt it. There's still a lot of work to do, but I'm hoping that we can get this all accomplished before the end of the year. We've been working on this thing for two years.
Most of the journey.